All right, the time is six o'clock. I'm calling to order a regular meeting of the City Council Council of the City of Sunset Valley, Texas for Tuesday, September 24th, 2024. And we'll begin with public comments. If anybody wishes to speak, please stand at the podium and address your comments to council.
Oregon. I live at Three Pillow Road. I'm a resident here of Sunset Valley since 1976. Watched a lot of these fields turned into shopping centers. We've had Jones Road was the dead end road right there at 290. Love growing up here. Was a part of the community. My family, my brother babysit Russell's daughter, got to know the community, Katie, Barbara, everybody, the cartwrights of case equipment. Just wonderful place to grow up, wonderful time growing up here. And tonight, I've got some business to share with the city of Sunset Valley concerning the business at One Pillow Road. And it is never fit in this community. It doesn't have a parking lot. It has created years and years of parking problems for the city along the front of my property, my adjoining neighbor's property. City of Sunset Valley says it's in compliance with the Disabilities Act. This business has bars on each window and door. How is that possible inviting the public to enter a liability? Are these fire code violations? My home, my business, my faith have under constant attack from One Pillow Road. I believe in the Lord Jesus Christ and the God our Father. The Constitution is merely a law we must all abide by to assure that we get along with our neighbors. 'Twas no one is above the law. The neighbor's business has abused, has abused and changed the face of the community. She made a cash offer to purchase my land on Christmas Eve a year and nine months ago, giving me eight days to pile a memorial rock wall that had seven news stories about the building of that construction of that wall for the veterans. This was to be placed along the front of my property. I'm sure you've all witnessed it. There was to be a fence between my property, home, and the road so I could properly get the stone memorial wall off the land. We went to closing where I learned she was a fraud and she had no money to offer. She built the fence on my land of one foot six years ago. I was arrested by the City of Sunset Valley Police Department Officer Detective Sterns. I had surveyed my property three times, shared that information with the neighbor in a written letter stating that I was going to remove her fence from my property. The property boundary was surveyed three times as I sued her for the $20,000 and won, as we sold the property to one another so she didn't have to enter the courtroom. This is a badly run business, unprofessional staff of the City of Sunset Valley municipality, and I pray for the proper cash settlement for all the harm this bad actress caused. I pray for the compensation of the damages caused by the City of Sunset Valley's municipality for the carelessness and the corrupt staff of my God given rights to enjoy my property. I have been forced to flee the place that I grew up since 1976. I've learned that she frauded me. Okay, so I've written that twice because I was in a rush to read this tonight, to write this for you and to bring it to you. She was now offering me half of what she originally offered to me on Christmas Eve within one month after I'd learned she'd frauded me. Now it's time for you to get off the property and I have demanding letters from her telling me I have 24 hours to act. So what was agreed on was she protected her estate with a trust, the state of Texas. So for this horrible lack of care in the oath she swore to protect, I will bring suit. 'Til I am properly compensated. For this, I feel molested. I feel harmed. There's been damage. I've been starved. While you have hired the ex-mayor Barbara Wilson to become city secretary, and these insults were worse than I could bear. After months of starvation, is there any job within the City of Sunset Valley for me? My tree company has been bellied up since this event. I cannot continue to bring you literature, make copies and hand it to each council member. This has cost me everything I have. So I'm having to flee to find a better place to live. The bars on the windows, oh, so let me go back to molested. I've been, I've been molested by a corrupted government. My male masculinity, my home, my business, my faith attacked for a voice of reason. Words? Words are free. These many violations deserve the proper cash settlement for allowing such a badly run business to interfere in my rights.
Mr. Horgan, you've exceeded the time for public comments.
Yes, very good. The bars on the windows and the doors exceed 33% metal. You will remove them or I will embarrass this town.
Thank you. If anybody else would like to speak at this time, please step up to the podium. Are you speaking as a public comment? Okay, please do.
I'm sorry. I skipped a line.
You skipped a line.
You skipped a line?
I'm Edie and I live in Sunset Valley and I really, 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 really like donuts.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm not going to top that. So I wrote something about my time on council with Wanda. Wanda Reed's died about three weeks ago, I guess. And, I don't know, I just thought a lot about it and I'm it's easy to come, tears are easy to come by for me, so I apologize. I have my little handkerchief, but and this is all like under an acknowledgement that like, Wanda and I really only knew each other for two or three years. You know, we were from different sides of the town and stuff, but, you know, for every two weeks, we spent several hours together during usually interesting meetings, but, you know, some downtime as well. Anyway, so this is what I wrote. I guess the, my four minutes is running. In two thousand and twenty, two strangers were sat next to each other on this dais. Thank you, Mark. For all the differences, they rather quickly realized they got along. Wanda and I would crack jokes to each other, bring each other's snacks from the table and encourage each other on our council work. Wanda was smart and sharp. There wasn't much for her to learn from me, but damn it, she listened. Wanda was an extremely effective council member. She loved her community. She wanted City Hall to be the people's house and worked towards it being a city gathering space. She started a city game night where she set forth to crushing me at Mahjong. She liaised with the Community Development Committee. She practically willed the Upper Cougar Creek Trail and park space into existence. And with one of her last acts during budget, she got money for the creation of a community pickleball court. When Wanda left council, she reflected on her time and she spoke about her relationship with every other council member. She described me as earnest. She nailed it, as stood as always, and I've held that compliment next to my heart. Two weeks ago, while watering some trees in my side yard, a gentleman drove up and asked me where the pickleball court was. I suggested maybe he was looking for the court behind City Hall. He thanked me and drove off. Curious, I raced inside to grab my keys and drove to City Hall. I walked back on the trail to find six people gathered to play on the court. I was so excited. I asked where they came from and how they like it. They were just as excited and told me how much they love it. They asked me who did it. I told them Wanda did it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody else which to speak at this time? All right, we're going to move on to agenda item number three, which is council consideration of agenda items for approval on consent. Mayor Potem.
I move that we approve on consent agenda items four, five, six, seven, and eight.
Okay, there's a motion to approve on consent items number four, five, six, seven, and eight. Does anybody want to pull one of those items for discussion? Is there a second for the motion to approve on consent items number four, five, six, seven, and eight?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed say nay. All right, motion passes. We approved on consent item number four, which is approval of the minutes from the September third, two thousand and twenty-four regular meeting and work session. Item number five, approval of annual contracts for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five. Item number six, approval of appointments to the five standing committees and the Arts Commission. And I want to express my thanks to all the residents who have stood to join a committee. I believe that we're still, one committee is one, is one quorum short, one short of a quorum, I think, or for meeting. And that's the Budget and Finance Committee. So if you know anybody who is available or willing to serve on the Budget and Finance Committee, please have them contact the city staff so that we can also receive their application. And again, thanks to everybody who has volunteered for this next year. Item number seven, approval of the purchase of two Chevrolet Colorado's for the police department and the purchase of one Chevrolet Silverado thirty-five hundred for the public works from Chuck Nash using fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five repair and replacement funds and the release, release of a public works Chevrolet Silverado fifteen hundred to Chuck Nash for trade-in value. And item number eight, approval of engineering task orders for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five. All right, well, council, we have a couple of agenda items left. The next one is our only action item. The last one's going to be a discussion item only. And this is going to be item number nine, which is presentation, discussion, and possible approval of a temporary special use permit and course for the Daisy Dash ten K, five K, and Kids Mile Event for Sunday, October twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four. And council, one update is that the course that's in the backup has changed. And so the city staff is going to go over the changes that are proposed as part of the, the, what the police have approved and reviewed with the, the course directors. And so I'll hand it over to the city staff for this item introduction.
Okay, again, this is the, what's becoming an annual, annual request for this Daisy Dash race. It's going to be Sunday, October twentieth, at, to begin at eight o'clock AM. The original route that we approved was going to take runners through the green belt and down the berm to back to Jones. We've since updated that. The runners will run up Master Sergeant Horrigan, down Jones, up ERW. They will run behind the shopping center, by Petco, behind Petco, and then come down Lovegrass or the trail by Lovegrass. They will remain on the cement portion of the trail all the way back to the bridge on Ernest Robles and then go back down Ernest Robles. So this, this map, this route has them going through the trail, down the berm, towards City Hall. They're no longer going to be doing that. And that was kind of an area of concern for the police department as well because they're going to have strollers and possibly pets running as well. And we have, we would have difficulty kind of controlling traffic on the trails because people tend to use that on a Sunday morning, whereas there's less vehicles on the street here in Sunset Valley on Sunday mornings. Other than that, we had, we have no problems with the, with the route.
And so council, you can see from the map, this is what's in the backup as far as the original course, taking it behind the Villas and reconnecting it onto Jones Road instead. Where it takes that turn next to, I think, what, you know, where there's a Y split, it'll go to the left back towards Ernest Robles Way and essentially it will be two, two-way direction on Ernest Robles Way for, for the course.
Yeah, I was just going to say, we wanted to, I know Chief, in working with Daisy Dash, really wanted to get the runners off of Brody Lane and off of the Highway two ninety frontage road for safety reasons, you know, traffic. And then additionally, we did reach out to the Village Shopping Center because technically, you know, this is a part of our Sunset Valley Trail System, but this is, this part along here is actually the Village, you know, Shopping Center property. Cindy Lasar, the property manager, had no, no issues with it. So we got the clearance from them. And, so I can say anything else? That's all I had.
I did have a couple of follow-up questions. So since it's, it's, it can be actively used by the, the Village Shopping Center in terms of deliveries, trash, Sunday morning is obviously not really going to be a time. Are, are we going to be blocking off that area and that's okay with the Village Shopping Center?
Yes, we'll block it off, but we will have a, a police officer there. If there's, if, if a delivery truck comes or a manager needs that, when there's a break in the traffic, the race traffic, we'll let them through safely.
And the other question I, oh, sorry, you might go ahead.
Yeah, typically, we've actually had organizations ask before if they can use the trails so that, you know, we're, we're kind of making a special exception. We do have a, you know, relationship. We, we give the Austin Runners Club a hot fund grant, but typically we do not allow races on the trail, on the trail system. So we don't want that to really become a thing, but it's not really using very much of the trail system at all, so.
And then the other question I had is I, just in terms of the, the section that it will be on the trail where it's granite gravel, especially that section along Love Grass, if there's a rain event, obviously that's something that can make it very muddy in those areas. You know, I've seen that just in terms of traversing the area. But I've also noticed there can be a lot of tree roots that, you know, potentially runners might not realize they're there, or especially if they're exerting themselves, you know, may not have as much care in terms of, you know, they paying attention. Can we do something to make sure we put markers down? I know possibly cones or something like that to, for any specifically obvious areas where we don't want people traversing and possibly injuring themselves. That would be something I'd, I'd like to see if we can explore as well.
Yes, we can make that a condition as well.
Okay. Council, questions for staff? Councilor Burrow.
Thank you. Yeah, I have two, two questions. First, I'm, I'm assuming based on the route that, that participants will be parking at the Burger Center?
Yes, sir.
And the second question is, can, can you provide even a sort of a ballpark estimate of how many participants will be actually participating in the, the event? So actually on the trail?
In years past, roughly hundred and twenty to hundred and eighty.
Councilor Johnson.
So the, right at almost the two-mile mark there, that, are they planning still just to like pop out onto the sidewalk? Or were they going to cut down through that like kind of shortcut?
Oh, they're, they're going to run the sidewalk, but we're going to block off a brief portion of Brody there for safety just so they're not running up against traffic right there. We'll put some barrels down for that little stretch. And we'll have a squad car right there.
Yeah.
We're talking about maybe thirty yards or so.
There's kind of like a curb. It kind of grows off that way. I, and I was just thinking about strollers trying to like make that turn because it's a
They could come out into the street. Again, we'll have barrels there to block off that.
Okay, great. And then I guess was construct, where were, where were we at with like construction Ernest, Ernest Robles? Was that going to have started?
Yes, notice proceed will be again on September thirtieth, but we'll coordinate everything and they're going to be beginning with, begin with the Savannah Trail project. So we should be able to work around ERW.
Trying to fit in construction and then two directions of, of running on Ernest Robles and then also people coming out of the Villas seem like a lot of overloading. But I guess if the construction hasn't started on there, then you guys will figure that out. Okay. It's got, I, I know we don't usually use the trails, but it's, it's very pleasant run. We should also remember, and I'll even go do this, just like close all the little, what is, what are they called? Like the dumpster houses? There's a word for them for forty-seven fifteen. It's like, just like the little concrete. Yeah, and then they can like close up the doors. Forty-seven fifteen had a, had a word for them, but they're just like close those all up and then just like.
For the, in the, on
Behind the, the village. Because like they just leave them open.
Right, right.
And which I'm, is fine.
We can do that.
Yeah, the day before. Yeah. Anyway, that was it. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Councilor Johnson.
Just going to make a motion. I move we approve a temporary special use permit and course for the Daisy Dash ten K, five K, and Kids Mile Event on Sunday, October twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four with the amended trail map.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. All right. That motion passes. Council, we are on to our last agenda item, which is discussion-only item. And this is bringing back the discussion that we've previously had regarding the Compatency IP project, including potential direction of staff for change orders or possible change orders. In the backup, you can see that there's updated material that's providing more, more information on some of the change orders that have been discussed and proposed by the engineering team and reviewed by city staff. So I'll hand it over to city staff for introduction to this item and further council discussion.
Yes, good afternoon, mayor and council. This is for the twenty-four, twenty-five capital improvement project, which includes the repairs to Ernest Robles Way and the Sunset Valley Savannah Trail. Most of these are things that we'll be discussing tonight that we're looking at possibly change ordering out of the project as well as a couple of items we may consider change ordering into the project. So the first items are things that are kind of just removal things, that are things that are striping, grinding, any other repairs that were originally part of the project on Home Depot Boulevard, as well as some quantity errors that were on the trail at Ernest Robles Way, the change order. The next ones are things that we're going to ask for council to provide some direction on. We've talked a little bit about the pervious versus impervious or traditional concrete. We have taken that to the Public Works Committee and the Planning and Environmental Committee. And we even took it back to the Planning and Environmental Committee and they were recommending to stay with their original recommendation to use the traditional concrete with a leaf imprint on it. They think it'll, they, just to remain with that kind of prediction. So that is, there are, you know, pros and cons. We discussed a lot of that at some of these meetings. And to, you know, there's pros and cons to both products. Pervious concrete theoretically should have more infiltration, obviously. But it also requires a lot more maintenance over time. And, you know, traditional concrete does not allow that infiltration. However, there's no, we did ask the engineers what the, if there would be any and significant or any kind of flood impacts from that, and they said they did not anticipate any kind of difference between the traditional versus pervious concrete. For the long-term viability and maintenance of the trail, traditional concrete is the one we would be recommending. We're estimating the cost savings is about eighty-two dollars per linear foot by doing that. So that is one area we like ask councils for some direction on. The other is the stabilized versus non-stabilized granite. And this one that we're coming back with a couple of different things, where originally the project was bid out using Staylock. And Staylock is a, it's a polymer-bound product that originally was being manufactured here in Texas, so it was kind of available. But that contractor, that manufacturer is no longer making Staylock. We do believe they are still making a product which is like a step down. It has a polymer with it, but it's a step down from Staylock called Stabilizer. And so we're going to see if they, they can actually make that and what, if there's any cost savings with that product versus the Staylock, which was having to come from out of state. We've looked at some other binders. The other binders are very expensive to use. So we would probably, what we're looking at is getting that pricing on Stabilizer and then we can bring that back. And if it's too expensive, just going with traditional granite gravel. If you would like to see like examples of what Stabilizer is versus what Staylock is, if you go out on the new section of the Violet Crown Trail that starts over by Home Depot Boulevard, the part that's in Sunset Valley, when you first get on, it's going to be Stabilizer. Staylock is actually the product that's further down. And you'll notice a marked difference. Staylock is starting to capture a lot of the rubber from the tires and turning dark, so it almost looks like asphalt. So we would recommend moving to Stabilizer if we were to do that. And the pricing works out. Excuse me. The other thing we're looking at still is the boardwalk. We are looking at, one of the things that's really driving up the cost of that boardwalk is the railing. So we're looking at some other railing options to, to put with the boardwalk. Also, Smith is also working on a boardwalk in Cedar Park and they're going to bring that to kind of give us what Cedar Park is doing for a boardwalk in that area. So that is one that will come back a little later. We won't necessarily have that information right away for this change order that we would be returning to council with on the fifteenth of October. And finally, there's a couple of things we'd like council to consider about adding into the project. And one of that, those is the possibility of adding electrical conduit into the ground. We don't have any plans currently for lighting or any of that, thing of that nature, or just having the ability of, of electricity. But while we are there, while we are already disturbing everything, going ahead, it's not going to be probably super expensive to go ahead and put the conduit into the ground for any future kind of projects or plans that we may have in the area. And the second thing we would like to look at adding into the project at this time is we, we have all the easements in place for the Country White Water Line and we'd like to, and you may recall that back when this was bid several months ago, the Country White Water Line was originally part of the bid that Smith would have had for, for the waterline. projects on Brody and Countrywide. We'd like to go ahead and have that waterline and turnaround basically put into this project as part of this contract so that we can go ahead and get that project underway as well. So now I'd like to turn it over if there's any questions or anything, anybody has any thoughts and ideas?
And yeah, just to make clear, that last Countrywide Waterline would include the turnaround, that's...
I just realized it wasn't on there.
Right.
I was like, oh.
And obviously, the cost of mobilization might be reduced rather than having it as an independent project, so that might be of city's benefit if the council wishes to consider that. Do you have any kind of rough estimate in terms of if we went with the concrete, we went with Stabilizer, and we kept some of the, the design of the boardwalk, what we'd be looking at as far as cost savings? And this can be just a real rough ballpark?
I don't have for the Stabilizer because we're still waiting on getting that price. I think it is about 130K on the concrete that we would be looking at saving. The boardwalk, we're still in the early phases. I can't tell you what the difference is. Well, I will say this, the boardwalk that Smith is working on, on Cedar Park, will probably be considerably cheaper than the boardwalk we currently have, which is PermaTruck, which is a precast concrete kind of structure, which means long-term maintenance is, there's very little long-term maintenance. But the others would be some kind of, a, a, kind of the lumber kind of products, and even if it's the recycled lumber type products, so.
Okay.
It, it would have more maintenance to it.
Questions from council to staff? Councilor Medicas?
So on the boardwalk, there was some discussion in the P and E committee about potentially metal, looking at that as an option? Where are we within?
So yeah, we, we would still consider that, so we're still in the preliminary phases on the boardwalk. I think the first thing we're looking at is seeing if we can change out the railing and see how much that cost savings would be, and then trying to come up with those alternatives and see if there's some other alternatives that could be done in that area. It is possible we can look at some metal options. We're looking at a, a metal kind of artist manufacturer who does some stuff for the backyard, so we may be able to see if they can look at some option there as well.
So when that comes back, we'll have the different options to think about?
Yes, we'll have some different options. Yeah, with the pricing on those options, so we can just choose which one it is we're going to go with.
And on the future lighting, the, the electrical conduit, we're talking about Savannah Trail, right?
Savannah Trail, yeah. So it'd be, so currently there is a waterline that's going in probably on each, you know, because there's two sides of the trail, basically that, you know, the side near La Madeline and the side near docks. There's a, a waterline that would be going in, so it'd be going probably on the opposite side of that trail, basically, and we would just trench in a, an electrical conduit there for any future kind of use, so it's already in the ground. That way, if the city ever decides to do something in the future, we aren't having to rip up the ground and disturb all the vegetation and everything, it's already there.
So don't we need a plan on where the lighting would be before we do the conduit?
Not for a conduit, not for just a con, not, not for just a tube in the ground.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we don't, the, and they can draw up the, the conduit location, and we should be good. We don't need to know how many, like, lights or anything like that. We don't have to have that planned, we just need to...
Or location of the light?
Or location. This is just the, where the wires and everything would get pulled underground.
Oh, okay. Okay. I think that, that's all I have.
Councilor Brown?
Thank you. Yeah, I have a, I guess a comment, not a question. The, this, the pervious versus impervious concrete discussion that's taken place with public, in Public Works and Planning and Environmental is, I, it, almost a rarity where, where it makes technical sense and fiscal sense together.
Right.
So it, it makes it a, a compelling argument, which, you know, seems very reasonable to me. The, the, the concern that I have, or I guess really that maybe it's more of a desire, is if we, if we move forward with the, those recommendations and which will require seeking variance, that it just seems to me that would be appropriate for the, the appropriate councils and staff to take a look at the documents that embody our building codes for the city and make sure that those are consistent with what we know now, based on, on these discussions.
That's a great idea.
And I also think it's been, come up before in discussions, but even if we went with the pervious concrete, the city would still be required to get a variance because there are sections of the trail, the bridges specifically, that will have to be concrete, and that would require a variance. Of course, the impervious cover amount would be much smaller than if we, you know, had the whole trail, so. Other questions from council? Mayor Protem?
Just one quick one, out of curiosity. What were the quantity errors that you found?
I think it was just a, it was on the trail, I'd have to look at, let's see if I can find it real quick. It was on the trail for ERW, and I think it was supposed to be a 100, like, linear foot section, and it would, it went in as a 1,000 linear foot section. So it, it, it's quite a bit of cost savings just to fix what actually there is there. So it, it was just like a, let's see, let me look at those numbers exactly. I'm not there. Yes, it's like 1,300 linear feet, basically, which, yeah, that was in here, so it, it should be closer to like 130 linear feet. It was just a, it was just a, so at $100 per linear foot, that's a bit, that's a lot of cost savings.
Good to know. Glad to see prices go down.
Yes. Gotta watch those zeros.
Yeah. So I think we are looking, council, for, I mean, we're not making a decision, but we need to be able to move forward with, with both the engineers and Smith in preparing those change orders to bring back for October 15th. So I think we are kind of, you know, looking.
Sure.
It's not a vote, but I mean, do we bring back with, do we go with the engineers and the P and E and Public Works recommendation of switching to the traditional concrete, or should we stick, or should we stick with pervious concrete? I'm seeing some...
And in, just as far as my, my feedback to council is that I really like the idea of combining this, or potentially combining this with projects that we had to not award, because I think it makes a lot of sense for us to be combining those and mobilizing at the same time, and those are already approved projects, they're already a budget. The idea of running the electrical conduit makes a lot of sense because I can see in the future where we might have amenities such as trail lighting or art lighting or something like that, that we, it'd be better to do at the same time. Given that pervious concrete doesn't provide as much benefit as, as just having no cover, right? You know, it's, it's going to have to require maintenance, it's going to require, you know, the city to, to respond when there's a need to. It's unfortunate, we don't have a good solution, you know, for keeping, you know, something less, less impactful, but if we're going to put something there and we were looking at safety, we're looking at cost, we're looking at aesthetics, you know, I think there's, you know, there's a good argument for that. And I do like the idea of having, you know, art in this, in the, the concrete itself if that can be achieved. Those are my thoughts, you know, just in terms of where we can potentially look at some savings. I, I would really like us to have like either the Staylock or the Stabilizer, because the idea of just having, you know, gravel out there is not appealing for, for me as a, you know, somebody who walks and uses trails and, but that, that being said, I, I understand that can be quite costly as well. And I'd like to have a boardwalk. The council feedback? Councilor Medicas?
Yeah, so I, I agree with what the mayor said. I, I think it makes sense to combine things if we can. If we're already digging things up, let's put in the conduit, and I think we should look at the Stabilizer for the crushed granite. And then, yeah, I think reading what, what the discussions have been and what the findings are, it doesn't seem like there's a big benefit to go on with pervious concrete versus impervious concrete. And I, I really think we need to, when we look at these things, think about the long-term care and maintenance of these things and the cost of that. And, you know, it'd be interesting, as, as we move forward with these projects, to look at, okay, here's the cost to build it, but what's the cost to maintain it? So that we can really weigh that in the materials that we look at. That's why I wanted to look at metal for the boardwalk, because if we put wood there, that's something that's going to, you know, deteriorate, we're going to have to replace it. So longevity is something I, I think is really important as we go forward. So I'm good with recommendations to staff.
Councilor Johnson?
Yeah, I was going to say the same thing. Everyone has, has said it, it's really good points, so.
Great. Any further discussion?
I think, I think we have everything we need for moving forward and coming back with, hopefully, all the information and change orders on, on the 15th, yeah.
Yeah, so, so council, the goal would be that we would have the actual change orders to review as part of this and get the final revised cost for the project, which we had then formalized with Smith so that they could move forward. And of course, they're going to move forward with the work that we are not going to be changing change orders on in current Ernest Robles Way, but this allows us to continue to finish out the project, so. Appreciate staff putting the work into, taking these recommendations back to the various committees twice in some cases, and getting their feedback. And I think it's a, hopefully it's a good compromise that we can do some cost savings, but at the same time, get a, a really impactful trail addition to the city and something that I think, you know, would, like Councilor Johnson said in his public comments, was really something that was pushed through by Councilor Reitz, and I think is a, would be good to honor part of her legacy with, with realizing, actualizing that, so.
Mayor?
Yes?
Is there, is there a, a timeframe on when, when we'll see those?
I believe they're going to come back on the 15th of October, our next council meeting.
Yes.
Thank you.
And we're making progress with the city of Austin to move forward with the Brody waterline, too. So hopefully, as while Smith is already mobilized doing this large project, you know, hopefully they'll already be mobilized, so once we get the approval from Austin, we should be able to quickly get that waterline installed over on Brody as well, so.
And they, and also, council, originally we were planning on doing the task orders for MEND as well, but because we do have Councilor Rosen Garden absent this meeting, and those are not, you know, projects that we need to move forward with as quickly in terms of the mobilization, we're going to review those on the 15th as well. And so that includes Everco, or, I'm sorry, the Uplands, as well as the Reimagine Brody, you know, addition, you know, additional work to get to further along the schematic design, so. All right. Well, council, I think we are...
Can I just go back?
Yes, go ahead, Councilor Medicas. Sorry.
When I last looked at the, the list of the members for committees, there were only two people on budget and finance, but you said they were missing one or two?
Yeah, that was, so we're, technically we're missing three to get to the minimum of required of five. So, but the mayor was just saying there's one committee that doesn't technically have a quorum, that's the budget and finance, but it's not...
Yeah, I think I misspoke. They only have two members currently that we just appointed. They need to have three more in order to meet the minimum criteria for meeting.
Okay. Just want to make sure we voted on the members that we...
And, and they're meeting, yeah, they're meeting Thursday, but that's the last meeting of this current fiscal year, so.
Fiscal year, okay.
Yeah, but...
Thanks for the clarification.
Councilor Medicas?
Like a motion to adjourn?
All right. Is there a second for that?
Second.
Mayor Protem? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right, council, we're adjourned at 6:41 or 6:40 by that clock PM. Thank you, council, thank you, staff. And thank you, thank you, Edie, for your public comments.